Thank you everybody for coming to. Hey, we heard if you think of one please.
Mr. Basil?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Butler? Ms. Jordan?
Yeah.
Ms. Alfred?
Yeah.
Mr. Sabatina?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Here. Okay, everybody, we've got copies in the minutes that have a chance to look at them. Anybody have any question on the minutes? Dinner came a month ago, two weeks ago, from January 2nd.
Mr. Basil?
Oh, yeah.
And Ms. Butler?
I used to be called. Something like that.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Alfred?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatina? And Mr. Smith?
Okay, uh, Mr. Bookmeyer is about here this evening. He called me last night. He had a family situation. He hasn't been out of town the rest of the week, so he has an excuse to have some. Okay, we had no citizens that on the agenda to speak this evening. So we'll go first of all to the reports. Mr. Zuchel, sir, we're straight with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Just a brief report this evening. Again, I talk about the water tank quite often. It's an exciting capital project for the city. And I was out there recently and it was a very nice day. Took a picture. Wanted everyone to see how nice the water tank actually looks. And it's fully functional. I want to share that with council. Uh, the company DN Tanks, one of the largest water tank builders in the country, has supplied training to our employees. And everything is working out quite well. I'm excited about it. And it holds a lot of promise for the future of the city. Again, another matter, Ohio Department of Transportation, every year, will go out to cities and villages impacted by the oil and shale traffic situation. I mentioned to council that we applied for a grant. ODOT sent a letter. We did not get the grant for paving. This would be portion of Route 9. We did not get that. They said that the program itself, there is $2.5 million, go out to southeast Ohio annually. They had over $10 million in requests. So the priorities went to areas that were impacted more than the city of St. Clairsville. But again, I assure council that we'll keep that, watching that program. And any grants that are available, we will pursue. So, and again, I want to thank our employees. Um, we've had maybe a mild winter up until now, but they've been doing a good job of coming out, controlling the roads, and keeping the puddles patched. And everyone's being productive and safe and doing a good job. So, uh, I want to thank everyone for their cooperation and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Another question. Yes, I forget. When's this water tower coming down in Silver?
That water tower, it's kind of just a online, when we get the new tank fully functional. And we actually have a startup date planned for February 5th. Once we know we're secure with that water system and the new tank in place, then we have a contractor who will come in and do that for us. So hopefully very soon.
Jim, anything on the EPA from the watch?
I haven't heard anything regarding the finding and orders that we've been told we would be receiving. We continue to get notifications on violations and things we have to do to improve our system. But I talked to Russell Flag, who is now the acting chief. Mr. Butler has been promoted to the PUCO. So they continually, we talk and, or we correspond electronically, but nothing yet.
Jim, and if this is your last meeting?
Yes.
The city of St. Clairsville, thank you. Appreciate working with you. I appreciate what you've done. I'm happy you're my board, but for the city and all the projects. I appreciate your knowledge, getting things done, making progress, and being proactive these last four years. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll just kind of see where things go.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
That's all right.
And any questions for Jim? Okay, we'll move to the parents' report.
Thank you. Uh, and again, thank you everyone for coming. Certainly appreciate all your interest. The past couple of weeks have been very busy. Again, just even learning where everything is in this building is, is been, you know, a learning experience. But I can't thank everyone enough for all the help they've afforded me, all of the things they've taught me. And we're learning every day. I've already met with two to three county commissioners two weeks ago. And met with them, we met with Josh Dutton today. And we're looking at how we can all work together to help get the commons moving. We don't want to see that sit. We've invested money. We want to see that become a very productive part of the valley. Again, there's a lot of things coming to our valley. We want to be a part of it. Larry Mary was there, who's with the Ohio Port Authority, Jim Zuchel, Josh Dutton. And we discussed. Or Josh Meyer. Whoops, okay. First mistake, okay. Well, the, one of many. Uh, we discussed bridging communications with the city and the county to get the development going in the commons. It was a very productive meeting. So that's a very big thing. Um, the police matter has been resolved. I followed the recommendations of the two law firms who reviewed the information. The appropriate recommended measures were put in place. We took the recommended action. It is now behind us. We will move forward. Um, we're working toward the permanent appointment of the police chief. And we hope to have a chief in place by the next council meeting. It is being advertised. So everyone who would show interest would have the opportunity to apply. And spent a lot of time the past couple of weeks speaking with each and every member of the police force. I was absolutely committed to do that. Wow, what, I'll tell you what, if you never give a round of applause, we have got a stellar group of people in our police department. We really do. And I, my admiration is just through the sky. They gave us some wonderful recommendations. They gave us some wonderful information. Even some of the part-time officers from other areas said, you know, this is, we do this in another place. It might be something that could help a little bit. And it was great. So we'll be talking to Mike about some of those things and, uh, really, really good. We've got advertising in place and again, uh, I promised to do this for service director, financial officer. There's applications and resumes are being accepted until January 27th. They're in the Times Leader, Municipal League, LinkedIn, and Indeed. And regarding water, which is certainly a big topic, I've met with an executive from Aqua to talk to them about their deadline. Right now it's April the 4th, but we did sit down, meet each other, Tony Mancaro, and talked about, you know, perhaps changing that deadline. But again, we said we are committed to doing what we said, which is explore every option. And we are getting ready, and I hope everybody's happy about this, to pursue the independent engineering study that the citizens wanted. So I hope, I hope to get more information about that for the next meeting. So it's been a busy two weeks. Thank you all.
I have a question.
Yes, Mary.
Is Aqua going to allow for the tunnel net? Is that what you mean by them possibly extending?
Well, I asked him if they, I said, you know, we're, we're putting things in place as quickly as possible to do the independent research about other options. Will you be willing to possibly move that deadline down the road? And so let me speak with the CEO and possibly.
Okay, is the EPA okay with that?
I've not talked to EPA about that yet, but we, we're going to be meeting with Mr. Flag for sure, Mr.? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I've got a few questions for you.
Yes, sir.
On the two positions, how many applicants have you received so far?
Right now, with service director, I've got a total of three. With finance director, I've got two.
And speaking of that, it was brought to my attention, and Mr. Flack, you may, you know, answer this. The legal ad in paper, it was supposed to have been written in accordance with the charter, correct?
Correct, Emmy notes.
Okay, I noticed in the public service safety, it says, and it's very ambiguous, I'm a lawyer, but it says, providing limited oversight of police operations. Is that in the charter? Is that wording? It's in the bank.
I'd have to look at that and get back to you, council.
And then I noticed in the director of finance, is there anything about payroll? Is that person responsible for payroll?
Finance director would be responsible for payroll.
Okay, is it in the, in the legal ad though?
I, right off, I can't tell you. I don't have it in front of me, but I thought it was in there.
Well, I just wonder if that was written in, in line with the, you know, charter, you know, which is the way it should be.
Absolutely.
Mayor, have you got the certification for a nurse court yet?
Yes, sir. That's in February.
And then the incident with the officer in question that you just mentioned, will council have a report on that? Will you submit to council a report of the results of that hearing and that finding?
Yes, I can do that. It won't be made public.
No, no.
But yes.
And would, would that go into his file?
I, I would have to talk to my legal counsel about that, see how he sees it.
And on the, on the lighter side of things, I received a complaint about a dog or dogs in the city building. And the question, which I can't answer, which I'm forwarding to you a year later, if, uh, you know, you're taking an animal out of its habitat, and if there would be an incident where someone would get bit, is that the liability of the city? And/or the person you brought them in?
That's probably going to end up being a situation by situation basis. And you'd have to look into that further at the time. I mean, because you've got to allow service animals.
Yeah, service animals, yeah, but there's, yeah, I mean, I noticed the, you know, what's called, uh, one of the doors been scraped off about allowing service dogs. So, you know, it's like any animal can come up here and, and, uh, you know, you don't want to see an incident because if it's on second property, it's not our, and you know, don't get me wrong, I like dogs, not like cats. You know, but we're talking about the main incident.
Well, this is a notification about doing a service animal, then I'm sure that the mayor can take care of that and put that properly.
A service dog would be on a leash, of course.
Correct.
What was scraped off?
What was scraped off? Yes, what was scraped off?
Uh, where it had service dogs on the outside. And it's, it's on.
What was, what was the complaint because there is no evidence?
Well, well, the complaint was that, uh, Mr. Sabatina, this is a, uh, that's a city building. It's funded by taxpayers and it's for civic business only and it's not accountable. And that's how it was expressed to me. So I thought I would bring it up. And another question was, animals get to know, get to do their business. If it's a fairly new carpet upstairs and downstairs, if that carpet is soiled or stained or whatever, is it the city's responsibility or the others' responsibility? So I'm just forwarding those questions.
I think where something that came from is there was several times where someone brought a dog into the council chamber of meetings that were not for service dogs. And I think in the past, and I'm going back a ways, I can't stir my memory too far. I think there was a situation in the bill where somebody brought a dog, you know, it wasn't a service dog. It was the utility office to pay the bill. Somebody had to get it. I'm not quite sure how that played out. So that's, I think that's probably a concern of some people that if they're not service dogs, we really want, that's what I think, that the city will, that that's, that's just the, yes.
Mayor, give me back to me some of those answers.
Yes, sir.
On the person's positions in the book, because that's even closer. And on the dog issue there. And that's all I have for your part. Other question?
Anyone else have any questions for the mayor? Okay, we'll move on to Chief Trolles. Do you have any reports this evening?
So a few things, um, just to make everyone aware for the process of purchasing a police cruiser. Uh, we have received a quote from them for, in the process of getting quotes for everything that needs outfitted. The mayor did post a position for a police officer with our one short. And the other thing is just to make everyone aware, we finished our year-end police report. You know, I have those numbers. I'll read them off quickly. Uh, in 2019, we handled 3,597 calls and complaints. We had two special teams callouts, 36 mutual aid assists, 141 accidents that we handled, 1,439 arrests, 235 parking tickets, 205 traffic citations, 857 warnings, 51 domestics, 147 armed drops handled, 20 thefts, and 10 burglaries. And that's about all I have.
Thank you. Can I get a copy of this, please?
Sure. I'll write it on this, please.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning. Cindy, the finance director, he is still ill. She was in long enough today to take care of him with the appropriation. So we'll move on to Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, first item, and actually I'll kind of review it and then Catherine proposed the appointment to city council. We have a vacancy in the Board of Architecture over review and Bruce there Martin. Uh, he has interest in serving on that. And I don't think you have this in front of you, so I'll read. From this information, uh, his resume, Mr. Martin is a 1971 graduate of Ohio State University with a bachelor of structural engineering professional degree. Uh, shortly thereafter, he acquired his PE license or professional engineer's license. In 1979, he and his brother started an architectural forecast concrete company in Wheelon. Uh, they're still in business today and he is active in the Navy operation of this company. The nature of their business involves their concern and participation in how a building represents the intent of the architect. He has always had a great deal of interest in the architectural presentation of building facades and the preservation and restoration of older structures. Bruce is a resident of the city of St. Clairsville as well. So Catherine, you can take that from, from here if you'd like to ask council. If they would like to approve your appointment of Bruce Martin.
I'd like to ask council to pass a resolution to appoint Bruce Martin. Thank you.
We need a resolution.
It hasn't been resolutions in the past since the motion in the second.
Senator Martin has voted to appoint Mr. Martin to that board of architectural review. And that's second.
I think that's a question. How many people are on that board?
Uh, it's a total of seven members. And their term is six years, six-year appointment. I also handle the board zoning fields and planning. Particular appointments for the board of architecture.
Six years is.
I think that's what it's.
It's a walk-in, it quickly.
Okay.
Is that in our charter?
It's a total of three years. It's in the Board of Architecture Review guidelines. Three years, it's not six years. That's I think sent it.
Wow.
That's I think the Senate decision. Mike, you have a question.
Can I get a list of these on the board of attorneys?
Yeah, and some of that might be on the website. Are there names on the website, or are these the ones that are currently? Yeah, I think they either get their names or, or, or the website.
I don't know if the terms are on there, but I'll check.
Yeah, terms are not, terms are not. But we have a list of the names with the terms.
No, I have a question for you about architectural review. Are they, you know, the oversight for some capacity, but are they the people that actually can sit down and view, like, long-term city planning, look at the landscape of our community in over a certain amount of time, maybe we might have kind of like moved this to here, moved that to there? Is that what they do, or is there?
That would be more the planning commission. Uh, more of architecture review looks at the historic issue. Uh, the socks. And decided to things that, and changes in this area.
Is the planning commission members on the website too?
Uh, yeah, the members should be on the website. The terms would not be, but to need that information, we have that. And, uh, second item. Uh, just a reminder, the planning commission, they need Monday, February 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Uh, any house member, member of the public, welcome to attend. And each meeting, what I'm going to try and do is bobby you a little bit about the census. As you know, you're having a complete town committee. What I ask council members to do is just, you know, anybody you see that's in the city, you know, knocking on the doors in your neighborhood. If you have friends that live in the city, just encourage them to, uh, complete the census when it does come again. So a reminder, this is the first year that they're going to do it online. So between March 12th and the 20th, any residents within the city and the country should receive a notice to say, hey, time to complete your census questionnaire. There's a link to their website. Get to their website, fill it out, and submit it. For some reason, you didn't want to do it that way. That's when they contact you, that they knock on your door and say, hey, you know, we have, they're actually going to have iPads, towns like this time around. So they can sit down with you and complete it along with you, involve your willing to do that, uh, get that information submitted. Some of the importance of the census is that they try to count everyone within the United States. The importance also determines the number of representatives in each state in the House of Representatives. So it's important to get an accurate count. It determines the distribution of more than $670 million in federal funds throughout the United States to hire your population for more funds you can get. You want to make sure you complete it. Those funds go toward health, education, housing, infrastructure. Gets sold out to local, for the state Department of Transportation, uh, which then goes into for construction projects. So it's important to get an accurate count on. And that's all I was going to preach on today.
Okay, but then will we have any more questions with online review and motion in the second? As of course, we have, I think, a little on that yet. Mr. Justice? Who needs a first, who needs a motion?
Linda, that's it.
Yes, we need to take those.
Um, Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Alfred?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatina?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other questions on planning and zoning for Mr. Murphy? Okay, thanks, Tom. Okay, we'll move on now to the committee reports. Finance, right?
Uh, yeah, we've got an ordinance tonight. It should be passed, I'd like to pass it on an emergency basis. It's the appropriations. I think we pass this in emergency every year. We can't wait this three readings, you have to pay the bills. So we can't wait till middle of February to get this passed, so, uh, when this comes up, I appreciate it. We pass it on.
So I, any questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, utilities?
We do not have a meeting this week, which is a meeting, the first, the first one of the month is what we have in utilities.
Mark is not here. Streets north side, here. That's streets outside. Safety, here.
There is a safety meeting tomorrow, by the way, at the city garage, 10 o'clock, I believe.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock, I'm sorry. Nine o'clock. I think it's about health and fitness and nutrition. So the council and employees are welcome to attend.
Okay. I, it's usual on Thursday.
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Maybe they change. Okay, I'm glad you brought that up. Yeah, okay, all right. Nine, is that what?
Nine o'clock. You need to bring some snacks. You're supposed to cater to breakfast.
Nine.
Healthy. Okay, uh, building grounds, Perry. My next ditch off is starting on Tuesday and I'll be touring all the buildings again for this month. And also, I know that Catherine asked about, um, the walls and stalls and the, and the bathrooms over at the.
The center.
The Rex Center. We'll build into that again and get that all tidied up. Fix a few things over there. Train station.
Oh, yeah, and it was mentioned to me that we've got a train station across from Abe's Bob'ski's that is like the oldest one in Belmont County. And there are surely some historical grants, and I don't know yet, I'll first admit that, that if we can look into getting something, that would be a beautiful little building.
I have the, um, I have the information on that a little while back.
Okay.
From college, from college and also from the store for people over by the mall area. And so, um, we could, we just at that, take a look and, and since we're in the first year and you start looking at outside phones. Us, if we, if we renovation, if we're looking at what we have to do. We're going to switch it from a, you do, it's all, I mean, I think you've applied for that. Yeah, probably haven't had any success. There has been several looks taken at that, even by my predecessor. Dennis looked at it for an education, Malibu Center. There are grant lines out there. I, I think that, um, it, it's been ongoing and, yeah, I would like to help you with it if you want to look at it. Absolutely.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have any questions for Perry? Planning Commission, Frank, you have a?
Yes, uh, the planning commission, we're going to have a public hearing here on Monday, February 3rd, uh, 6 o'clock here in council chambers. That's coming up. That's on every board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Craig? Okay, fire district, Frank?
Yeah, quite a few things to report. Uh, we have a regular reorganization and regular meeting last Wednesday, 15th of January. The appointment of chairperson for fiscal year 2020 on a rotating basis. Uh, we'll be the township trustee and that person is Kathy Kaluger. We reappointed, uh, Tim Hall for fire chief for fiscal year 2020. And the lady with the gentleman, Tim. We have a point, repoint, Matt King as fiscal officer and Matt does the next one, John. And a couple of other things on side note, the fire district, I'd like to thank Pat Howard for generous donations when the pizza shop closed, donating to the fire district. So thank you, Pat. Guys appreciate it. The fire district appreciates it. In the regular meeting that followed, uh, we had our personnel, part resignation of part-time employment of part-time. And we're going to bid, the, the fire district will bid the 2013 Chevy 3500, two-wheel drive. It's got 120, almost 126,000 miles. It will be sold as, in as-is condition. And also, we granted the fire chief permission to begin creating specs for a new fire engine with the anticipated purchase to take place in late 2020 or early 2021. And the fire board will have a special meeting this Friday morning at 9:00. And also, I gave a report to the mayor, it'd be in her desk. This is my copy. Uh, the chief did a nice, uh, end of the hearing or report. And, uh, I will go over everything. It sits down in the mayor's office. In 2018, we had 3,044 calls for the fire district, fire at the worksite. In 2019, 3,185. Very substantial. And chief wanted us to make sure everyone knows this, in the day of scams, the fire district received almost $2,000 in donations. Those are donations, that's not solicited. All right, so people, you know, they appreciate what I do, what the guys do. They usually. And just a little tidbit, he had the daily call volume, for some reason, Tuesday is the heavyweight day. We had 502 calls on Tuesdays in 2019, so, and then Wheelon Moscow received 1,300 transports coming with it. So there's quite a bit of it, the mayor only has on purpose. And that's all I have to report. Our next meeting, our next regular schedule meeting, I'm sorry, one more thing, will be, turn page here, will be Wednesday, February 19th, 3:00, main station. And that's it.
And any questions, that'll...
The special meeting, what did you pronounce, the special meeting is that?
Okay, we have a few of personnel.
Personnel. And then who all was on the fire board?
You have, I'm the city rep, I'm the city rep, so I'm next year, this year. Kathy Kluger is the township...
An city rep, is that, is that an annual, every year you're appointed?
Well, just, yeah, I'm the...
I just wondered, does the city do that every year?
Yeah, city does that every year.
And Kathy's?
Kathy, yeah.
She just was appointed for what?
Just fiscal year 2020.
But just on the fire board?
Yeah, because on a rotating basis, Gregory Alman was last year. And then the other two fire board members, we have one represents the township itself, and that is Todd Witsch, and we have the representative of the city of the security gentleman.
And who is it that appoints the people to the fire board?
We just have, you know, we advertise it and get the applications, we call them in, and we appoint them.
Where's that, where is the advertised from, is it in the paper? Are the ads in the paper for the advertisements for fire board, or where is it?
Yes, when the time comes, yes, it's in the papers.
Okay, and is that, when it's advertised, an annual appointment?
Again, I believe this is four years.
It's a four-year appointment?
Yeah.
So the fire board has a city rep, they have a township rep?
Two and two.
Two from the...
Me and Perry are city, Troy and township trustee for the township.
Right, but aren't you the rep from the city council?
Yeah, yeah, for city council.
Okay, well Perry's...
Is the city.
So there's a city council, and that's an annual appointment, but the person from the city is every four years? And that's advertised in the paper?
Yeah.
And Kathy's, Kathy is...
She's, she was sent by the, on a rotating basis, she was sent by township trustee.
Township trustees, okay. Thank you.
I don't know how they know about it, but they, it rotates usually.
So I'm sorry, just city council person, a city person, two township people, and then what's the fifth one?
That's the way it's set up, I've always asked that.
Okay.
I, I guess the way it works, the mayor, there's a two and two, that's a critical issue, the town board, the...
And that all would be in the fire districts, kind of charger or whatever? How do you pick?
The line also...
Five of us.
Yeah.
Would you like to copy that quote?
Yeah, I'll, I'll see Tim on Friday, if you're listening.
Thanks. I would ask, okay, since apparently you are a public meeting.
But the next public meeting, February 6th, is next year. It's usually the charter, go on the lunch thing.
What time is that?
Three o'clock.
Any more questions for Frank? Thank you very much, Frank. Okay, we'll move on to the recreation report, Linda?
Indoor soccer registration is currently in progress and will continue until January 25th. Roller hockey registration is also in progress, and the deadline for it will be the third week of February. Community Day is set for June 27th, which is a Saturday. The board would also like to thank, since it is the end of banned basketball, the board would like to thank the shirt sponsors, who are Two Villains, Comic Shop, Buckeye Test Management, and Belmont County Safety Council. The next thing I would like to report is that summer concert series bands have been booked, all except four have confirmed, and I'm happy to say that one of the confirmed bands is the Vince Delnova Band, so everybody come on out and get your good ones.
Your good ones, yeah.
Vince Delnova, yes. Pardon me, we'll be at Gilis. Oh, yes. What did it say? Pardon me, what did it say about the magic? Just like, maybe somewhere around there. And what did come? Morgan Jones will be opening for the first concert once again. I'm sorry, I need to interrupt, but you mentioned something about the advertising. Can we look at maybe beefing that up so like you said, people know? Absolutely, okay. Yeah, the next meeting is February 17th. And as for the park, I'll just move on to the park. We would like to thank, they would like to thank Donnie and his crew for working on the culverts, that is with the township. And also, there was a little confusion about when the park is open during the winter. It will no longer be open through the winter because of roads, the possibility of the danger with the road conditions, and there will be no plumbing during the winter. So from December 15th through March 15th, the park will be closed. Next meeting for that will be February 10th.
Anybody have any questions for Linda? Okay, I have one. On the indoor hockey and the indoor soccer player, the...
The agent.
The agent, the...
I'm not sure of that, right. I can get that.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much, Linda.
If you could put it on the website.
Okay. Okay, move on to ordinances and resolutions with our law director, Miss Nick.
Since I am basically new here, I see false-looking new business, too.
Well, yeah, yeah, we can jump right down to that, because since...
Okay.
Actually, where they're going to be is under the readings for the ordinance and the resolution. So these would all, the ordinances under there would all be per reading.
Okay, there's, on resolution number 2020-2, is there going to be a motion for executive session discussed? Or is she two?
Okay, and...
Yeah, I'll make that.
Okay, a second for executive session.
What do we want to talk about, although, do you want to give the other two? You can give an order or...
We'll do the executive session, yes.
Okay. Your first ordinance is ordinance 2020-1, it's an ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency. And this is for your appropriations.
Okay, we need someone to, I think that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read will be separate readings, be sustained, and any foreign orders. Second? Missouri, call roll, please.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Oprech?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Six, six.
That is passed.
Well, this is... That's, that's...
Passed through emergency legislation. Now we'll vote on the motion to, from the resolution.
Mr. Basil?
We have to take a roll call motion. We would have to take a, since we passed it as an emergency, do we need to take another roll call for the resolution because of the ordinance itself? So we have to have someone make a motion to pass the ordinance. Fast ordinance 2020-1, and a reservation. Second, where you have to read that. Next one, Mr. Head.
An ordinance to make permanent appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, State of Ohio, for the period January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2020, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, someone want to make a motion to pass the ordinance? I'll make a motion. Second? All good?
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Oprech?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to skip over 2020-3. This is resolution number 2020-3, and there's an inadvertent omission from the title, which can be corrected. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Clairsville to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement for construction of the new reservoir and declaring an emergency. And I believe, our service director, Ken.
Thank you, President, if I may. Again, this was the same resolution we had previously for the supplemental loan for the water tank. Now that we have a new administration, we need language that addresses that into Catherine's terminal office, so it's the same thing we saw before, just carrying it over to a new administration. So I appreciate council's support.
So this is not a wholly grand dashboard, this is the water tank?
This is the water tank. Same thing we did, I think, in the, it's the same language, same, it's the supplemental one.
And you don't know what resolution it was for name?
I don't. It's the same, same language. I think if it passed on emergency, I'd appreciate it.
Frank?
Jim, would you elaborate? Section 2 of this resolution, that the dedicated source of refound will be water customer usage charges?
Yes, that's part of the loan agreement, where it's paid for by water insurer revenues from customer payments. It's a line.
This is the exact same line as 2019?
It's a supplemental, additional money.
I believe, Jim, that was resolution number 2019-24. Sorry, the bottom date was October 7th, 2019.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mr. Jules requested that be passed on a mercy basis, we have the motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, I'm going to, the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings, be sustained and pending a resolution.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Oprech?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Six, six.
Can you read that?
A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Clairsville to apply for, accept, and enter into a water supply revolving loan account agreement for construction of the new reservoir.
Do we have a motion? Who's the one? Who's up? You roll call it.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Oprech?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Six.
Okay, I'm passing that. Requested we will end the executive session for discussions, resolution 2022, if anyone wish to make a motion, we will end the session.
Question?
Yes.
Did we have to elaborate?
This is for personnel matters. So I'll make a motion, because the executive session regarding personnel matters, which I think is 121 or 22 G1. Is that right? The, without having a current...
Second?
Second.
Pass for executive session, both?
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Ms. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Oprech?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
None.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Five, the mayor and the board in opposition.